San Mateo City Council here on Monday, June 6th, 7:00 p.m. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. We're excited to be here in person. We are having hybrid meetings at this time. You can attend either remotely, as you have been, or you can attend in person. There are several ways to participate for those who are attending in person. You can, if you choose to speak, you can fill out the yellow request to speak form and hand it to the clerk, or you can sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber, or you can scan the QR code to sign up, and the code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber near the iPad that's at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If you're using a telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment for that specific item. And with that, we will now get started with ceremonial items.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to call the roll first?
Oh, sorry, yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gouthos is out ill. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappen.
Here.
Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So our first ceremonial item tonight is Pride Month, and I think we're going to have a remote speaker. First, I think that I have right here a proclamation that I'll be reading, and then we'll have Craig Weisner to speak. The proclamation, whereas the city of San Mateo recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2022 as Pride Month throughout San Mateo, and whereas the city of San Mateo joined County of San Mateo to observe Pride Month with a pride flag raising ceremony to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas, the progress pride flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people in society. And whereas, all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had immeasurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas, the city of San Mateo is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community, and whereas, while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas, this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and the city of San Mateo calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore, the city of San Mateo hereby recognizes June 2022 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community. Be it further resolved that the rainbow flag was raised on June 1st, 2022, recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the city of San Mateo a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. Thank you very much. And now I think we're going to allow Craig a few moments to speak. Welcome, Craig.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Bonilla and City Council. Good evening. I'm County Commissioner Craig Weisner. For nearly 35 years, my husband and I have been working for LGBTQQIA+ inclusion and equality in both secular and religious society. Our church is part of the More Light movement. The name More Light comes in part from St. Matthew, San Mateo, who proclaimed, "You are the light of the world." A city set on a hill cannot be hidden, nor do people light a lamp and put it under a bushel, but on a stand, and it gives light to all in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before others so that they may see your good works. In 1620, pilgrim pastor John Robinson, riffing on St. Mateo, proclaimed that there was yet more light to shine, meaning that there was always more to learn, more goodness to reveal. St. Mateo, first century A.D. John Robinson, a pilgrim in 1620, and the San Mateo City Council in 2022, all proclaiming that a city on a hill cannot be hidden, letting our rainbow light or progress shine before others so that all may see our good news. San Mateo, you have made my husband and me, hundreds of thousands of parents, children, grandparents, grandchildren, aunties and uncles feel treasured and assured that we do not have to keep our beautiful lights under a bushel, no matter how we express our gender or whom we love. Thank you for your proclamation, your support, your courage, and your leadership. St. Matthew, San Mateo, as my Salvadoran friends would say, present. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Craig. Big hand. Thank you. Okay, well, we will now move on to our second item, which is going to be, actually, we're skipping item two tonight because Joan could not be present, and we will be conducting that at the next council meeting?
July 18th.
July 18th meeting, honoring Joan for her retirement and all of her long and glorious duty to the city over the last 42 years, 42 years. So we're skipping to item three. Park and Recreation Director Sheila Kanzian, Commendatory Retirement Resolution. I'm going to read the resolution now. And be prepared, it's a little bit of a resolution here, so I'm going to take a drink of water. Thank you. Commending Park and Recreation Director Sheila Kanzian for 52 years of service from June 1970 through June 2022. Resolved by the City Council of the City of San Mateo that Sheila Kanzian began her service to the community of San Mateo in Parks and Recreation in the summer of 1970, where she discovered a love for their incredible services to the community and a lifelong passion from which she has built her career for 52 years, serving with distinction in many roles that culminated with her leadership as Director of Parks and Recreation for the last 32 years. And whereas Sheila was born and raised in San Mateo and spent her summers enjoying the city's playgrounds, and notes that she is a second-generation city employee as her father was a firefighter in San Mateo during World War II. And whereas, in the summer of 69, Sheila began her journey as a volunteer for Parks and Recreation, and the next summer, she was hired as a paid recreation leader and continued to work as a recreation leader each summer throughout college. Sheila earned her BA in History with a minor in Sociology from the University of San Francisco, and many years later earned her Master's of Public Administration from Notre Dame de Namora. And whereas, upon graduation from University of San Francisco, Sheila intended to become a high school history teacher, but describes that she became an accidental park and recreation professional, working year-round for the department, gaining experiences in a wide variety of part-time roles, and in September of 19, or December 1976, she became full-time as Beresford Center Assistant Director, and in just four months was promoted to Shoreview Center Director, then in 1986, she was promoted to Recreation Division Manager, and in 1990, she was given promotion to Director of Parks and Recreation and served in this role for 32 years, becoming the longest-serving Park and Recreation Director. And whereas, she is known as a gifted recreation programmer, a visionary who creates cherished community traditions like Extravaganza and the seasonal ice rink in Central Park, the Winter Wonderland event, and the popular Central Park music series. She began the first childcare program in the early 80s and has continued to champion the needs of quality children's programs throughout her career. In 1997, she envisioned and advocated for the development of a police partnership with Parks and Recreation to create the Police Activities League, building a sustainable nonprofit to support programming that has just celebrated 25 years of outstanding service and difference-making to San Mateo youth. And whereas, Sheila has a keen eye for understanding style with an elegant view of design and a deft touch in helping others to see the vision that has resulted in beautiful and functional parks and facilities in San Mateo, such as the Light and Airy Senior Center that fits perfectly into the neighborhood, transforming the former city dump into the shoreline park, a vibrant and environmentally rich system of parks, updating the San Mateo Golf Course built in the 1930s to the sparkling Popular Creek Golf Course, and of course, Central Park, the jewel of the city's park system. She has been the driving force for the current master plan that will create the space for use long into the future. And whereas, her leadership was much needed in the past two years as the city found new ways to serve the community through Parks and Recreation as we weathered the COVID-19 crisis, and Parks and Recreation pivoted to provide school services through LEAP at its recreational facilities for children to have a safe place to continue their education. And whereas, Sheila was very active in the California Parks and Recreation Society at both the local and state levels, serving two terms as Secretary Treasurer before becoming State President and chairing numerous committees at the state level, including the Strategic Plan, Awards Program, and Annual Conference. For her contribution, she was awarded the 2014 Fellowship Hall of Fame Award, the highest professional award for the society and the District IV Distinguished Professional Award, and was voted into the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration, a national organization that promotes broader public understanding of the value of this profession. And whereas, her giving back to the community is not limited to her professional role as she is a longtime Rotarian, a past president of San Mateo's Rotary Club, a PAL Board Member, and also lawn standing board member for the Mills Peninsula Hospital Foundation, the Peninsula Family Service Agency, and for St. John's Cemetery, all demonstrating again her love and dedication for this community. And whereas, Sheila is sought after by her city colleagues for her sage advice, ability to dissect issues and predict outcomes, critical and strategic thinking skills, and mostly for her valuable commitment and friendship. She is the first to volunteer for any citywide event or effort and has contributed greatly to the city's special relationship with our sister city Toyo Naka, Japan, the special relationship with our adopted unit of the 101st Airborne, and is the first to support causes that the city undertakes with a generous and open heart. And whereas, one of the signs of a brilliant and fulfilling career is someone who actively participates with a joyful presence in all of the offerings of their profession. Sheila made her mark as the jolly dancing Rudolph in the annual Holiday Festival of Dance, and on the sly, she appeared as McGruff, the police crime dog, for many national nights out. You never knew where you would find her signature presence throughout the city. And whereas, Sheila is known for her exquisite taste, beautiful, seasonal, and fun attire, her appreciation of the good things in life like fine food and wine, her laughter when you surprise her with something, and the smell of flavored coffee in the office. And whereas, and this is the final whereas, Sheila, so soon, whereas Sheila's lasting legacy is the joy in the faces of children and families in the parks, in the participation in the programs and services of the recreation centers, and with the involvement of all and beloved events that have served to bring the community together as one family. Her vision and deft hand at the helm ensure that San Mateo's Parks and Recreation offerings will continue to build community, character, and joy for everyone long into the future. Now therefore, this council does hereby confer upon Sheila Kanzian its highest commendation with deep gratitude for the visionary and collaborative manner in which she has led the city through Parks and Recreation, with special thanks for her endless availability, professionalism, dedication, and for her style, knowledge, and character. We have here your resolution, and I'll bring it down, and if you'd like to say a few words, please start.
Sheila, if you don't mind, if we could say a couple words before you? Sure. Is that okay? Absolutely. I'll start us off, if everyone's okay with that. Sheila, if everyone in San Mateo only knew the contribution that you've made over this more than 50 years, this room would be overflowing, and it's, it is largely invisible in so many ways because you do the work so well and because we all enjoy it with such abundance. And so I wanted to share with you some of the things that if I didn't know you, I would completely take for granted, okay? When I moved here, when I was pregnant, when I would force myself to exercise, I would literally walk up the hill to Indian Springs Park with my giant belly, and it was this oasis destination that I could relax and anticipate the growth of my family as I became a deeper part of this community. I met one of my best friends in Central Park when she was holding her infant, and I had a one-year-old on the grass, and I saw her and I said, "She looks cool." That's a relationship that's going on 13 years. I had the privilege of getting back into shape after my two kids by learning to run on the new King Field that you invited me to help redesign and re-envision and give new life and investment to. My kids learned how to swim, the life-saving skill, at the King Center. And during COVID, when all of the parents around the world were losing our minds, San Mateo launched the LEAP program and provided a hub for learning for kids that couldn't attend schools, and you provided that in-person learning experience to my kids to break the social isolation and the mental stress and to connect us to our community during some of the most critical and scary times in these last two years. I feel like many ways you've watched me grow up, and you've watched my kids grow up, and I can say that that is true of the hundreds of thousands of families that you've touched. So I'm one person, one family. I know, and I hope you know, at the most profound level, the cascading impact that you have had on this community and my family personally, and I'm forever grateful for you. You have set a platinum standard for professionalism, and I know that it was your focus and your dedication during some of the hardest times during the recession, when the Parks and Rec Department was some of the first programs to get cut, that you built it back, and you built it back stronger with more vision and more innovation, because that is the leader that you've been and that you are, and we have so much to be grateful for you. And your imprint on this community is tremendous and immeasurable. The institutional memory that you have is irreplaceable, and I'm so profoundly grateful for you and for all that you've contributed, and I aspire to dedicate myself so fully and completely in the way that you have to this city. And I want you to always know that anytime you want to put on the McGruff outfit, we welcome you back anytime. Thank you so much, Sheila.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sheila, I just want to, other council members, I'm going to ask if we can withhold our remarks because we still, we're not finished honoring Sheila. So Sheila, you can go ahead and make some comments now, but we have, oh, unless, maybe we should go ahead and do the, there are two other honors yet, Sheila, so maybe you want to hold on a minute. Thank you. Okay. So next, I want to show that we have, well, let me bring Brian Perkins from Congresswoman Jackie Speer's office, because Brian's waiting very patiently. So Brian, please go ahead.
I was waiting for you to hear Eric's comments.
You can wait for that.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Sheila. Upon the occasion of your retirement, Congresswoman Speer has placed a statement into the congressional record. It's about eight paragraphs long, but I'm only going to read a few of them. And thank you so much. It says, "Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize Sheila Kanzian upon her retirement after 52 years of public service to the people of San Mateo. Sheila is the marathon runner of Parks and Recreation Directors, having started as a summer playground leader and moved her way steadily upward over decades of service. While all parks in San Mateo have their own character, the crown jewel is the site of the old Cole Mansion, affectionately known as Central Park. During the year, families enjoy the winter ice rink, modern and accessible playground equipment, and a stunning Japanese garden that draws visitors from around the world. If you love Central Park, recognize that Sheila is the heart that allows Central Park to live. The rose garden and train are beloved and allow families to exercise together while enjoying amenities unusual in a city the size of San Mateo. The Community Recreation Center has witnessed countless public events and is a gathering place for San Mateo seniors. In dogged pursuit of keeping Central Park in fine fiddle, and even when city finances were strained, Sheila did a remarkable job of managing countless koi fish, hundreds of trees, and numerous city managers. The koi and the trees were quick learners. Madam Speaker, it's my honor to recognize Sheila Kanzian. If ever there was a case for pursuing a life of public service, I ask that we look at the public spaces nurtured by Sheila. The printer Claude Monet had his garden, and he built his life's work around its beauty. Sheila Kanzian had a city, and her joyful work will be with us for generations yet to come. Congresswoman Jackie Speer, congratulations, Sheila."
Thank you, Brian. And Sheila, we have one final honoring here from our state legislators, Josh Becker and Kevin Mullen, and I'm going to read just the first paragraph because there are numerous paragraphs here, but they, the first paragraph has the main message here. Whereas, Sheila Kanzian is retiring as Park and Recreation Director for the city of San Mateo after a stellar 32-year career in that position, and it is appropriate at this time to highlight her many achievements during her years with the city and extend to her a heartfelt thank you for her immeasurable contributions and a job well done. And it continues, but we're going to bring this down, and I'm going to see if we, would you like to have a photograph taken, Sheila?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, resolution?
Can I get a wet one for my hand, too?
Rest of the council? This only happens once every 52 years. Maybe Sheila could pull that one.
Okay, one, two, three. Parks make life better.
Parks make life better.
Thank you. So now do you want me to speak? Are you all ready? Before the mayor gets up here, maybe I'll sneak in my comments. You know, this isn't hyperbole. I was thinking about this. If you think about it, there are very few people, if any, in the history of San Mateo who have made a greater impact on our city and the quality of life of our residents, our hundreds of thousands of residents through the years. I mean, if you just think about it, it sounds like, oh yeah, that's this nice thing to say, but I actually, it's true. I mean, I was counting this evening, there were 26 different mayors coming and going since you've been working here, and even more council members.
Wasn't that your favorite, Sheila?
The last one up there is the best. Council members come and go, but your contributions have spanned over five years, or five decades, and that's just really remarkable. In your much-deserved retirement, you lived here in San Mateo. Basically, anywhere you go in San Mateo, whether it be our tree-lined streets, whether it be passing by a rec center, our landscaping, of course, our parks, you were going to know that you really made San Mateo a better place, you made an impact, you contributed, and I hope you feel a sense of pride of being, a sense that you did about as much as you could possibly do to help the lives of other people. And I also think that it was kind of glossed over in that long proclamation, but your contributions to the city go well beyond your day job and your contributions to PAL, San Mateo Rotary. I'm hoping that in your retirement, you get to focus a little bit more on those other things and you stay involved with the community, which I know you would, but I'm looking forward to that as well. Thank you so much, Sheila.
Thank you so much.
Well, I can't believe we're here. My goodness. So there's two things that I want to touch on that left a profound impact on me as a public servant, and I'm so grateful to you for these two things. And the first one is, you know, Parks and Recs is a very proprietary thing to our residents because it's very immediate and it's a lot of joy, as we heard from Councilmember Lee, that Park and Recs brings to our residents. So I have found during my time on the council, it is, people are very proprietary about it, you know, they have very definitive ideas of what they want and how they want to see things shake out as it relates to Park and Rec. And I learned from you very early on, I watched you, and you always said, "If that's what the public wants, then that's how the decision will be made." And you recognized that in your role, Park and Rec was very much something that belonged to the community. And I think if we keep that mantra in mind as public servants, we will always succeed. So you really understood what it was like to be a public servant and what that meant to our community, because really, it does, all of this belongs to our community. But you lived by that North Star, and it served you very well, and I'm just telling you, this public servant learned a lot watching you and left a very profound impact on me, and I shall try in my endeavors to carry on that mantra. Number two, I learned from you that it is not always about dollars and cents. How many people showed up? How much did we spend? Was it worth it? And I remember talking to you, this was after we did the 125th anniversary, which, by the way, was a total blast because we got to do the skit and we figured out who had acting skills and who did not, among other things. But it was a super fun time, and it was our first kind of foray into the B Street Nights, or Thursday Nights on B Street, and you said to me afterwards, and I said, "Well, it came away with a great feeling, I don't know, how did it pencil out? We spent money on it." And you said to me very specifically, "It is oftentimes about the sense of community." And truly, Park and Rec is one of those things that is about our sense of community, and the human condition craves that sense of community. So you held a very important role in this city, and you led with great distinction because you allowed our human condition to kind of grow and thrive and be nurtured and all those good things. So I shall always be grateful to you for those two things. Community belongs to the people, and we have to nurture our sense of community. You took it to all new heights. Platinum standard is an accurate depiction, no question about it. And then the final thing I'd like to say is that you, Sheila, always had joie de vie, and I got excited when you came in the room. I knew I was going to have fun, and I appreciated that, and while the work is important, I think it's important we don't take ourselves particularly seriously in certain regards, and I looked forward to you coming into the room, and I just wanted you to know that from my heart, I loved your joie de vie, and I feel like Friday night was so indicative of all things Sheila and that whole package that is Sheila, that magical night in Central Park.
So now can I talk?
And finally, Sheila, I'd like to offer just a couple. Thank you. I just want to say that I have always been amazed, having grown up in San Bruno, early on, I realized that if I wanted to go to a real park, I had to go to San Mateo. Yeah. And I have to say that I remember being 16 years old and actually being in Central Park and just amazed at what, you know, a beautiful setting was. I know you were not in 1968, the Park and Rec area after then. In fact, you may not even have been working for parks. But you inherited a great system, and then you took, not only maintained it, but you made it better with the, I mean, these additions of the Shoreline Park. I mean, Central Park is a destination. People come here from all over the peninsula. But the new Shoreline Park, which is our former dump, and I remember dumping things at the dump there, it's a destination also, right? It's a very important destination. People come there for so many different reasons. It's beautiful to be along the shoreline there. That was visionary. And I have to say that you have proven yourself over and over again with such great things as the Extravaganza, the Winter Wonderland, the music in the park, all these things that you have done that have really created a great quality of life for everybody who seeks to use our parks. And I just can never thank you enough for all of that. Truly appreciate that. And with that, now, please, Sheila.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bonilla, and members of the city council for your very gracious words. And also thank you to Brian from Congresswoman Jackie Speer's office and for the representatives from Senator Josh Becker and Assemblyman Kevin Mullen. If you didn't meet my sister on Friday night, my sister Debbie Fulbrook, who came from Virginia. They call her the mini-me. And then my good friend and former colleague Tara Russell, who was a management analyst for me probably about 15 years ago, she and her family moved to Sydney, Australia, and she came back for the festivities last Friday night. So, and I really appreciate both Congress, I mean, Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Papen for being there on Friday. So I am very grateful and very proud to serve the city that I was born and raised in. And it makes it even more special that, as you mentioned, I'm a second-generation city employee. My father served as a firefighter during World War II in the 1940s. And as has been mentioned, I am an accidental park and recreation professional. But despite having come to that perhaps later, I did become a passionate advocate for the work that we do, believing that just as clean water, sewers, safe roads, and public safety are considered essential public services, so are parks and recreation. And we are as important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in the community. We would not be the community we are today if we don't provide safe playgrounds and ball fields for children, to provide a gathering space for older adults to come together and socialize, to provide a tree canopy and urban forest that combats the effects of global warming, and to provide safe places for children to go to in the summertime. And I feel very honored and privileged to have been given the opportunity to act as the steward of all these resources and provided that trust and support by four city managers, numerous city council members and commissioners, of which Council, I mean, Councilmember Lee was a former Park and Recreation Commissioner, dozens of fellow department heads, hundreds of staff members of our department, and more importantly, the trust of the community that we serve. Our staff and department work every day to meet community expectations, and for the vast majority of times, we get it right. But I will admit that there were some days we may have fallen short. I've always stressed the value to our staff to work as one organization, to act with respect, integrity, and compassion to everyone we come across. And when we didn't get it right, we apologize, we move on, and hope that we learned from our mistakes. And as much as I know we are here celebrating my career, it really is not about me as much as it is about we. There would be no Shoreline Park without Dennis Frank, no Poplar Creek Golf Course without the late Tim Heck, no Dog Parks without Mike Blondino, no Tree Canopy without arborist Dennis Paul and Matthew Freed, no PAL without Randy Bickel, and no place for children to be supervised and connect with their virtual classrooms during an entire COVID school year without Bob Palacio and the entire recreation team. These and many others are the ones to be celebrated and acknowledged. The instructors who teach our children to swim, the landscape maintenance workers who tend to our parks, the administrative staff who pay our bills, the preschool teachers who prepare our young children for kindergarten, and the hundreds of other staff who throughout the years have been the face of our department.
That was very touching.
And of course, to all of you and your predecessors who have made it all possible through your
And now it's time for us to move on to our consent calendar.
leadership, your advocacy, and your support during the years.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
Why do I always go after something like that?
Thank you for allowing me to leave San Mateo a better place than how I found it.
Yeah.
Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, ordinance adoption, access to reproductive health care facilities. Item number five, library personal computer replacements purchased. Item number six, tennis instruction agreement. Item number seven, summer youth theater programs agreement. And note, there is a contract exhibit amendment on your dais. Item number eight, preschool music programs agreement. Item number nine, wastewater treatment plant immediate actions projects, Package Two contingency. Item number 10, citywide street rehabilitation Phase 4B agreement. Item number 11, Basin A and various locations sanitary sewer improvements project construction agreement. Item number 12, California Transportation Commission Local Streets and Roads Project List for Fiscal Year 2022-23. Item number 13, Fiscal Year 2022-2013 General Obligation Bond Tax Rate Levy. Item number 14, Downtown Business Improvement Area Resolution of Intent for Annual Renewal. Item number 15, Merit Employee Salary Schedules Approval. And item number 16, Pedestrian Mall Design Contract Amendment. Well, Sheila, did you approve this tennis contract? So moved.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the council wishing to pull any one of these items for discussion? Seeing none, then I will ask if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on any one of these items. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Then, in that case, the mayor is looking for a motion to approve consent.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk. Could we please have the roll call vote?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Papen.
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Don't go away.
And now, before we go on to the public comment, we have to go back for a minute because we have one final comment in honor of Sheila's retirement from Councilmember Joe Gothels, who couldn't be here tonight, but he did forward to Deputy Mayor Papen some comments for you. So we're going to go ahead and do that.
I am Joe Gothels' proxy. Great distinction that I come before you today to say the following. Sheila, you have been an institution and part of the fabric of the city for generations. I have seen firsthand how you have made San Mateo a better, more beautiful, and vibrant place. You were always first to sacrifice when budgets were tight. I'm most proud of how you cultivated the relationship with Toianaca and the 101st. Your vision for San Mateo is a San Mateo that serves all of our residents with childcare and recreation and park space. The parades and the ice rinks and the summer music series have added to my enjoyment. We're all deeply thankful for your service. A grateful resident, Joe Gothels.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, so on we go to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commenters?
If there is a member of the public who wants to comment on something not on the agenda, please raise your hand or deliver. We don't have anybody in the House. Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay. In that case, I will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to the public hearing. Item 17, Proposed 2022-23 Budget and 22 through 27 Capital Improvement Program Review with Rich Lee, our Finance Director. Welcome, Rich.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, members of the council. Just give me a minute to get the slide deck going. Okay, so, good evening. The item before you is the first hearing for the proposed 2022-23 budget as well as the 2022-27 CIP. Just a brief background, this was first previewed to the council in April of this year, as is tradition. Tonight is the first hearing, and in two weeks from now will be the second hearing, followed shortly by adoption of the budget. At a high level, the budget is $284.8 million. Over three-quarters of that is for the operating budget and the remainder for the CIP. Looking at the funding sources for the total city budget, over 50% comes from the general fund, and the sewer fund comprises 30%, so altogether nearly 85% coming from those two Looking at the capital improvement program for the five-year period, $67.9 million for next fiscal year, and nearly 60% of that is $40 million for the sanitary sewer, which largely reflects the city's investment in the clean water program. The total five-year CIP, nearly $275 million. And 43.8% of that is for the sanitary sewer, $120 million. The operating budget, 70% of that comes from the general fund, which is typically why we focus on the general fund for the majority of the presentation. For the general fund for next fiscal year, we are projecting $159.5 million in total revenues and $164.2 million in total expenditures. So we're looking at a net loss of $4.7 million. And over the next couple of slides, I'll be talking about major tax revenues. So general fund revenues as a whole, we're looking at $159.5 million. And as shown in the chart before you, the black figures, that represents tax revenues, which is 80%, over 80% of the total general fund revenues. And then the remainder comes from largely charges for services. So drilling down into property tax, which is, again, the general fund's primary revenue source, at over $80 million for next fiscal year, the majority of that, nearly 60%, comes from what's called current-year secured. It's actually the remainder that I'm going to focus on the next minute, which is excess ERAF and property tax in lieu of VLF. So as a brief precursor, San Mateo County is one of two counties in the entire state that has what's called a VLF shortfall. For San Mateo County, that's due to the highest assessed value and the lack of non-basic aid school districts, where only six of the 23 school districts are non-basic aid. That's because of the VLF backfill. The funding sources are property tax and ERAF from these non-basic aid school districts. Over the past two years, the county has experienced shortfalls of nearly $100 million and $56.5 million for the current fiscal year. The state's budget trailer bill proposes to cap excess ERAF at the current fiscal year level and use the growth in subsequent years as a funding source to address the growing VLF shortfall. If ERAF and property tax from non-basic aid school districts over the 2021-22 cap is insufficient to backfill the VLF shortfall, the state will backfill with its general fund. As noted in the staff report, this proposed action by the state is potentially unconstitutional, and the city has strongly opposed the budget trailer bill. So I'm going to show you a brief video clip, which illustrates what's going to happen over the next 10 years as a result of this proposed legislation. So what happens, you'll see the excess ERAF. That is the amount of excess ERAF over the current-year cap. The state appropriation, as you can see, it starts to drop precipitously while the excess ERAF continues to grow. Over time, by 10 years from now, the county-wide shortfall, sorry, the county-wide impact is $333 million. Our share of that is approximately $6.7 million. That is a takeaway. But I just wanted to show the council over time what happens because of this potential budget trailer bill. So moving on to the general fund's number two tax revenue source, sales tax. Two things I want to point out. The first is the recovery from the recession. The arrow on the left points out the Great Recession, in which it took four and a half years for the city to recover. The pandemic-driven recession, it was just about two years, so a much quicker recovery. For next fiscal year, we're looking at just over $22 million for the local 1% sales tax. I mentioned in the staff reports the antiquated nature of the state's sales tax law. What this chart shows in the, I guess, in the lighter blue, it shows what we actually get from the local 1% Bradley Burns. The darker blue bar on the right, that shows if sales tax, if the local 1% sales tax were actually allocated by destination, that's what we actually would receive. That's the impact, really, of the antiquated nature of the law, the changes in consumer behavior over the last 20 years, where they're purchasing more taxable goods online versus in physical stores. And I also mentioned sales tax rebate agreements, where cities come to an agreement with their retailer, they establish the point of sale in that city, so all the online transactions for that retailer are, the point of sale is in that city, and the city then gives a percentage back to the retailer. This takes away from all the other cities that would have normally recognized that as use tax in their county pools. So moving on to the real property transfer tax, the council has seen this chart before, showing 20 years of history for the real property transfer tax, albeit, one caveat, the last data point there is an estimate for the current fiscal year at $16 million. The council has also seen this chart as well, showing major economic cycles over the last 20 years and the average RPTT for that period. For the long-term assumption for next fiscal year, as well as the 10-year forecast, we assume the average of the current major economic period as well as the prior, which is $11.1 million. Looking at transient occupancy tax, this shows, again, 20 years of history as well as the next two years' projections. For next fiscal year, we are projecting $3.2 million. This is, it's a quicker recovery than what we had anticipated, but we are still well under the baseline TOT revenues from pre-pandemic. Based on how we're performing now, we do believe that TOT revenues should be able to recover back to the 2019 baseline by the end of the 10-year forecast. So moving on to general fund expenditures, we're looking at $164.2 million in total expenditures. I'm showing two looks at it. The first is by type. So 50% of general fund expenditures... and the city then gives a percentage back to the retailer. This takes away from all the other cities that would have normally recognized that as use tax in their county pools. So moving on to the real property transfer tax. The council has seen this chart before, showing 20 years of history for the real property transfer tax, albeit, one caveat, the last data point there is an estimate for the current fiscal year at $16 million. The council has also seen this chart as well, showing major economic cycles over the last 20 years and the average RBT for that period. For the long-term assumption for next fiscal year, as well as the 10-year forecast, we assume the average of the current major economic period as well as the prior, which is $11.1 million. Looking at transient occupancy tax, this shows, again, 20 years of history as well as the next two years' projections. For next fiscal year, we are projecting $3.2 million. This is, it's a quicker recovery than what we had anticipated, but we are still well under the baseline TOT revenues from pre-pandemic. Based on how we're performing now, we do believe that TOT revenues should be able to recover back to the 2019 baseline by the end of the 10-year forecast. So moving on to general fund expenditures, we're looking at $164.2 million in total expenditures. I'm showing two looks at it. The first is by type. So 50% of general fund expenditures for personnel, which is consistent with previous budgets, as well as that's where the core services are accounted for in the general fund. Looking at it by department, again, when you combine police and the contribution to San Mateo Consolidated Fire, 54% of the general fund expenditures going to public safety, which is, again, consistent with previous budgets. So I want to recapitulate to the general fund summary, but I'm showing the breakdown of what our ending fund balance is projected to be. So again, $159.5 million for next fiscal year in revenues, $164.2 million in total expenditures, so a net loss of 4.7. However, if you look at the ending fund balance breakdown, if you recall back to April, the council adopted a resolution to commit $10 million in unassigned fund balance for the purposes of $4.5 million for CIP projects and $5.5 million for the cost of negotiated labor. Over the next two years, if these estimates come to fruition, the reduction will be to the committed fund balance. So, unassigned fund balance, which includes the 25% reserve as well as the rainy day reserve, should be untouched. I'm going to pause there, see if there's any questions about the general fund. If not, I'm going to move on to other operating funds.
Councilmembers, questions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I just think for the public knowledge, it would be great to have a reminder about how the American Rescue Fund supported our recovery and sustainability during the lean time of COVID. Just to make sure that that's part of the picture.
Thank you for the reminder, yes. Because of the American Rescue Plan Act, the city received $19.27 million, $9.6 million in the prior year, and we will be receiving $9.6 million in the current fiscal year. Certainly has helped to offset our revenue loss, primarily from TOT as well as sales tax. And thank you for the reminder. So moving on to the Construction Services Fund. This fund accounts for primarily building permit revenues. We're expecting $8.8 million for next fiscal year. In expenditures and transfers out, $16.3 million. And that's primarily personnel and transfers out. You'll note that this is a planned spend-down as we project to reach our targeted reserves of 12 months of operating, and we should reach that by '24, '25. So the last, final major fund that I'm going to cover is the sewer fund. So for next fiscal year, we're anticipating $85.5 million. That's primarily from the sewer service fee, and next year is year five of the five-year plan that the council approved. So that'd be a 12% increase in sewer service fees. On the expense side, $245.7 million. Obviously, the majority of that coming from CIP for execution of the clean water program. The last piece I want to touch on this evening is the position budget. So for a couple of years now, the council authorizes the position budget. So this is the number of FTE, the specific job classifications by department. There's a handful of departments that have had changes, primarily to the Public Works Department. And noted in the staff report, based on the study that was conducted of what the staffing levels and the specific job classifications that are needed to operate the new wastewater treatment plant. They have added eight FTE, but they've also taken away two FTE. So the difference reflects the net. The other notable change you'll see is in the Parks and Recreation Department. I just wanted to point out that there are no changes to merit FTE, so those are our full-time positions. It's all in the per diem FTE. Again, that reflects what they believe they can offer in terms of programming for next fiscal year and the staff support behind that. So that's the end of the presentation for this evening. Welcome questions from the council or from members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Lee. Do we have questions from the council?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I guess I just wanted to make sure that we also sort of highlight to the public what I thought was interesting in terms of the larger questions of our community need and the unfunded community need. And so I wanted to make sure that that's also something that is made visible in this conversation. So can you remind us again, what is the current capital improvement unfunded community need, our total?
So I can even point out to the page on the current fiscal year's budget book. For the CIP, from the last year's five-year CIP, it was just over $300 million in unfunded CIP. We will be updating that, of course. For the current budget book, will be coming to the council late July. But as it stands right now, the unfunded CIP is approximately $300 million.
Right, so that's where I remember it was, $300 million. And then, as we also talk about enhanced revenue opportunity, I think there's an important other aspect to highlight, which is that our population growth has been relatively consistent at around 1% annually. And our total employee count has been pretty stagnant, is that right, over the last 20 years? And some of that can be attributed to technology efficiencies and restructuring. But I think that there's an unfair critique of municipal government sometimes, that we run this bloated ship and that there's all this excess when, in fact, the needs and the demands of the community keep growing and our organization has remained very lean and stable over time. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I want to recall back to May of 2020, when the council approved the Fiscal Sustainability Plan. One of the elements of that plan was to identify seven vacant positions, seven vacant non-safety positions that we could eliminate but maintain the service level. The other part of that was, I guess, part and parcel to that, was identifying technology that could help us to achieve that. One of those was getting permits online, which was done, again, tip of the hat to our IT and our community development departments for making that happen in basically six weeks. And then at the end of that year, getting business tax online. So these efficiencies have helped us to achieve that, again, with, like you said, identifying efficiencies and staffing. The other part, and one last little plug, is for our Enterprise Resource Planning System. This is an opportunity for us to modernize and transform the way we do business. So that has started two months ago, and we're looking to finish that effort in late June of 2023.
And so there's the technology efficiencies, but there's also been a very, I think, commendable sacrifice that many of our employees made during COVID. And I wanted to remind the public about the concessions that our employees made and the commitment that the city made to retain our jobs where we could and also make sure that we could weather the challenges in our lost revenue.
Thank you. And yes, that was the request of our bargain units, the equivalent of two years of no salary increases, to, one, maintain the core services to our community, but at the same time, try to save jobs. That was the courage of the council to use the resources that we have to rely on that fund balance that had been built up over the Great Recession to get us through the difficult times that lay ahead.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from other councilmembers? Seeing none, I think we're going to go forward to the public comment, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of hands raised. Start with Martin Wiggins, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla and councilmembers. My name is Martin Wiggins, and while I am a planning commissioner, I am talking to you today only as a citizen of San Mateo. The morning of Wednesday, June 1st, I was biking my kids to school. We were headed east on Ninth Avenue in the bike lane.
Martin, I think you're on the wrong item. We're on the budget right now. I think you need to...
Yes.
Okay. This is the item you want to comment on?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Martin, I'm sorry.
In short, we were struck by a car while biking in the bike lane. Thankfully, the kids are okay, but it has brought to my mind the importance of safe bicycle infrastructure. So you do have a draft budget before you tonight. As a reminder, the Bicycle Master Plan on page 64, under Implementation, recommends the city to earmark general fund dollars to support quick-build projects. However, I only see a portion of CDBG dollars as allocated to bike-ped improvements, and those only in two neighborhoods. I would ask that you consider increasing this amount. I would also ask you to consider using a share of the RMRA and traffic impact fee dollars for bike safety improvements. Just 1/10 of the annual $2 million RMRA budget could fund a high priority BMP project. In contrast, I note $18 million set aside in fiscal year '26-'27 for a new parking garage in Central Park. Imagine what $18 million could do for bike and pet safety. I envy your position to be able to directly impact capital funding towards people-centric infrastructures, and I hope you will consider doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Motashemi.
Good evening, City Council, Honorable Mayor Bonilla. Thank you for your consideration of this item and the important work of setting the budget. Early on in 2022, our group moved San Mateo, presented to the council, and you all intently listened to us as we talked about the importance of funding bicycle pedestrian and transit improvements in the city and also crucially, funding the staff capacity to increase sustainable mode share in the city. So I am excited about the strategic plan that the council adopted, that it's moving towards this idea and that you will be studying at some point in the next fiscal year, a potential dedicated funding sources for bicycle and active transportation and pedestrian projects. One of our other requests was a request for a part-time, non-benefited Safe Routes to School Coordinator position. Reading through the budget report, I'm not super clear as to whether that has been adopted or that is planned for in this budget. So I would encourage and offer that up as a topic of conversation in your upcoming deliberations on this item, whether or not that position has been included in the budget for positions for this year, and also whether or not there has been a discussion at the city level about increasing as we head into this period of time where there is significant funding that will be made available for these kinds of improvements from the federal and state governments if we're thinking about building up staff capacity in order to provide those improvements and be able to design those improvements and then execute them. I think that we should be, I guess, really emphasizing these kinds of improvements, especially given that we're still in a place where unfortunately, people who want to bike their kids to school are getting struck by cars in bike lanes. And it would be great for us to increase the funding that's dedicated to making more safe infrastructure in that regard. So I would certainly welcome hearing a discussion and potential prioritization or inclusion of some sort of increased staff capacity so that we can do this, especially keeping in mind the still-large investments that dwarf our investments in bike and pet infrastructure that we are making in increasing parking supply in the city. So I would encourage you to think about that as we're going into these deliberations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, we will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for comments or additional questions if you have any.
I'll just ask the question. If someone could answer the question that was raised by Mr. Motashemi about our desire to fund the Safe Routes to School program position, which I believe was approved in the strategic plan.
Good evening, Council Zalia Mitch, Public Works Director, Councilmember Lee. So yes, that position will be approved with the budget. It's part of the operating budget, and it was proposed as part of your strategic plan in January.
Great. And while I have you there, maybe you can also address some of the enhanced funding opportunities that council discussed in terms of expediting the rapid implementation of the Bicycle Master Plan.
Absolutely. We're currently evaluating projects under OBAC III, which is, those applications are due soon. So we're evaluating bicycle pedestrian improvements. We have quite a few projects in the works that have been integrated as part of our pavement management program. So every time that we pave a street and we have to restripe it, we look at opportunities to either incorporate sharrows or bicycle lanes. So there are other efforts that we're actively working on to expand the network and make it safer.
And then also, were we also talking about the commercial linkage fee allocation?
Traffic impact fees?
Yes, sorry, traffic impact fees.
So the question that the resident had was on both RMRA, which we use. It's a combination of funding that we get annually, and we have to maintain our pavement infrastructure up to date so that we continue to receive those funds. So we use that. And in terms of traffic impact fees, those are mostly reserved for large infrastructure projects that add capacity, so not necessarily bicycle infrastructure.
Right. And then also, I think it would be helpful just to remind us, wasn't the parking structure downtown isn't required to get a seismic upgrade? Isn't that one of the main motivations for this repair?
So all of our parking facilities, we will currently do, our scope to do a structural assessment on all of them so that we can assess the repair needs. I think the question was on the Central Park garage, and that would be a proposed expansion, and that is part of the Central Park Master Plan. But the funding that we have in our facilities planning is to assess the infrastructure needs on the existing garages in downtown.
Through the mayor. The item in the budget that was being referred to by Mr. Wiggins is a placeholder for a new Central Park garage that's been in the budget for a number of years. And the funding source for that would be, most likely, a revenue bond that would be secured by future parking revenues. It wouldn't be funded by the general fund. And parking and roofies.
Thank you.
Other councilmembers? Deputy Mayor? No? Okay. Okay, thank you. I just want to add my own thoughts regarding the needs to improve bike safety, pedestrian safety in general on our streets. We did receive a letter from Mr. Wiggins, who spoke earlier regarding an unfortunate near-tragic accident that happened when he was biking with his two kids. He has one of those bikes that has the space in front for the two kids to be in there. And a car, who got impatient at an intersection, decided to go around into the bike lane where they were going and actually hit them. Thankfully, nobody was injured. Did turn the bike over, spilled the kids out, but the car stopped. Fortunately, the driver became aware and the car stopped, so that possible tragedy was averted. But I just want to say that, as a city, I know we have made it a high priority, and we recently, as was demonstrated with the poplar and humble bike lanes, made a serious commitment to improving safety. I just want to make sure that we're putting forth every possible effort to do this because we have a long history of, and this happens everywhere, but we did make a commitment to Vision Zero some time back. And I think we need to work to be closer to that, maybe harder than we already are because we've been talking about this for 20 years. The bicycle master plans and everything that we've been transit-oriented development, the need to make the streets safer for pedestrians and bicyclists the need to make the streets safer for pedestrians and bicyclists if we want to shift modes is really critical. So, um, with that said, I want to thank you, Azalea, uh, and everybody else here tonight for doing everything we can to make that happen. Thank you. Okay? So I think, is there anything else we need to do tonight, Director Lee?
Uh, no action from the council this evening. We'll be back in two weeks for the second hearing and the adoption.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're now going to move on to item eighteen, New Business, the 2020 Climate Action Plan Annual Progress Report with Andrea Chow from, she's our Sustainability Analyst.
And through the mayor, if I could, um, I notice we have someone signed on in to our live Prime Gov, um, where you could, to comment, uh, Crystal Hernandez, you need to be in the actual city council chamber to, um, use this feature. Um, if you'd like to comment remotely, if you could join the Zoom call, it's in the public meeting portal on the top of the agenda, and you can, you can comment remotely from there or join us here in the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, members of the city council. My name is Andrea Chow, and I'm the Sustainability Analyst for the City of San Mateo. My presentation this evening will cover the progress we've made in implementing our climate action plan. The Climate Action Plan was adopted in 2020 and includes strategies and measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and implementation measures are organized in the categories shown on the slide. To track the implementation, staff provides annual updates to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and to city council on the status of each implementation measure and key metrics. My presentation this evening will highlight the progress we've made in each of these categories. First, I wanted to show a little bit of background on how the city has progressed on our, on our community-wide emissions against our 2005 baseline. The city has made great progress in meeting our 2020 reduction goal, and by 2017, we had already met and exceeded that goal to reduce emissions 15% below the 2005 baseline. Uh, but we have a lot in store for us for to meet our 2030 and 2050 goals. I want to start with building electrification. Building electrification refers to buildings that use electric equipment for space and water heating, clothes drying, and cooking, and all-electric building does not use fossil gas, otherwise known as natural gas. Building electrification is an important strategy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions because natural gas is a fossil fuel and its primary component is methane, and methane has a very high global warming potential. So in 2019, the city council adopted its very first building electrification reach code, and this offered two pathways to encourage electrification and went into effect January one of 2020. And looking at permit data from that year, there were 196 dwelling, all-electric dwelling units. Also in 2020, the city council updated, adopted and updated reach code requiring all-electric construction of residential buildings and of office buildings, and this went into effect January one of 2021. So in 2021, there were all-electric new construction permit applications for 253 dwelling units. Staff are currently reviewing building electrification reach codes for new construction and existing buildings for the next code cycle. There are also rebates available for electric equipment, and in 2021, through the Bayren Home Plus Program, rebates were issued for 30 heat pump water heaters and one induction cooktop. I also want to draw attention to the city's upcoming Electric Home Online Workshop, which will be held Wednesday, June 22nd at 6:30 PM. This Zoom webinar will go over how to electrify your home with assistance from the Bayren Home Plus Program and with, uh, assistance from Peninsula Clean Energy. The speakers will go over the benefits of electrification and available rebates. To find more information or register for the event, the information is on the city's website at www.cityofsanmateo.org/sustainability. Peninsula Clean Energy is the city's electricity provider and began providing 100% greenhouse gas-free electricity in 2021. At the close of 2021, San Mateo had a 97.2% participation rate and a 0.1% average opt-out rate for 2021. We saw an increase in the amount of solar that was installed in this past year. There were over 400 solar permit, permits issued with almost 3,000 KW installed, uh, residential buildings. And in 2021, there were 92 battery storage permits issued. Solar permits for non-residential buildings varies greatly year to year, and in 2021, there were three permits issued for 205 KW, uh, non-residential buildings. In terms of energy efficiency, uh, the Bay Area Regional Energy Network provides a, an array of programs and resources for energy efficiency upgrades. The Home Energy Score Program provides a score of home energy use on a scale of one to 10. It estimates home energy use, associated costs, and provides energy solutions to cost-effectively improve home energy efficiency. And in 2021, there were 44 Home Energy Score rebates, uh, in San Mateo, and this is the most rebates of any other city in our county. Through Bayren's Home Plus Program, residents can receive rebates for different energy efficiency measures, including insulation, air sealing, duct sealing or replacement, heat pump equipment, and more. And in 2021, there were individual measure rebates issued, uh, to 107 individual measure rebates issued. Bayren also has a program for multifamily buildings where property owners can receive $750 per unit when the efficiency upgrades are designed to save 15% or more of the building's energy usage, and in 2021, 18 u- units participated in that program. And then finally, the Home Energy Advisor is a resource to residents interested in making an energy upgrade. Advisors offer free unbiased advice to walk you through Bayren rebates, and they also provide referrals to other energy programs. And in 2021, the Home Energy Advisors engaged with 72 individuals in San Mateo. The Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Project was a partnership with PG&E to make lighting and HVAC upgrades at city facilities. The project work was completed at the beginning of 2020, and we're excited to see that actual savings for the year 2021 exceeded energy-saving targets for both electricity and gas. And in addition to that, the ci- the city continues to make efficiency improvements at park restrooms and recreation centers. The city is also part of a partnership to construct a new residential building and parking garage at two city-owned parcels downtown. The seven-story affordable housing project known as Kikuk Crossing will be all-electric, and this means the building will have electric space heating, electric water heating, cooking, and clothes drying. The parking garage will include a solar system to offset electricity use and include the installation of 27 EV chargers that meet the city's reach code requirements. The city prioritizes electric vehicle infrastructure to ensure EV adoption throughout San Mateo. At the end of 2020, city staff had secured Cal EVIP funding with the assistance from Peninsula, Peninsula Clean Energy to install 13 Level Two chargers at the Main Street Garage. These Level Two chargers are now installed with PowerFlex equipment and are currently available in the basement level. With these newly installed chargers, there are now 33 ports available at the, for the public at city-owned sites, and in addition to those 33, there are 113 charging ports available across the city. Notably, there are new fast chargers installed at the Crystal Springs Shopping Center. A review of permit data shows that there are more EV chargers installed throughout the community than in previous years, and CEC data shows that an increase of zero emission vehicles sales in San Mateo County. And the city currently has 57 alternative fuel vehicles as part of our city fleet, and it is a pro- council priority to develop a transition plan in this next fiscal year to evaluate infrastructure requirements for charging and assessing the availability of green vehicles. I want to highlight two projects that were completed in 2021 that advanced our sustainable transportation goals. Uh, this includes, uh, the complete street improvements on North San Mateo Drive between Baldwin and Peninsula Ave. Bicycle mode share improvements include Class Two and Class Three bike facilities, and then pedestrian mode share improvements include new lighting and curb extensions at pedestrian crossings. And then the city also completed implementation of its first bicycle boulevard on 28th Avenue between Mason Lane and El Camino. The city was also awarded grant funding to develop a citywide transportation demand management ordinance, and staff are currently working on coordination with MTC to finalize that scope. And I listed a variety of transit-oriented development projects that are currently under construction, and so this list includes all projects within the downtown area and within the rail corridor transit-oriented development plan, which provides guidance for development within a half mile of the Hillsdale and Hayward Park calteling stations. Okay, related to solid waste, SB 1383, California's Short-lived Climate Pollutants Reduction Act, establishes statewide methane gas reduction targets, and the city council is probably very aware of the actions taken to continue compliance with this law, as the law focuses on providing organic collections to all residents and businesses. So over the next two years, there will be a huge focus on education and outreach to the community and establishing an edible food recovery program. Currently, there are 223 multifamily buildings out of 739 buildings with compost service, so there are, uh, many buildings who still need compost, compost service. Recology's Waste Zero specialists are actively contacting these buildings to support, uh, and provide technical assistance in this transition. The city's disposable food service where ordinance is modeled after the county ordinance and will require that food facilities and restaurants use compostable fiber-based materials for their disposables. This ordinance will be enforced beginning October one of this year, and so that, that's coming up and right around the corner. Uh, the Team Up to Cleanup program continues to bring together residents and neighbors to eliminate litter in our streets, storm drains, and waterways, and in 2021, there, the program had 982 participants contributing over 3,000 hours of volunteer service. There are a variety of rebates available to encourage water efficiency and conservation. The city partners with Bosca to continue to issue rain barrel rebates, and we saw an increase in rain barrel rebates this past year. Uh, in November of 2021, the city partnered with Flows to Bay to distribute rain barrels at the city courtyard. San Mateo County residents were able to reserve a discounted 50-gallon rain barrel, and then also on top of that, take advantage of the rebate. Cow Water distributes rebates for high-efficiency equipment, including twits and washer machines, and in 2021, they brought back the lawn-to-garden or turf replacement rebate along with the spray-to-drip rebate. So residents can, residents and businesses can transform lawn areas into water-wise gardens. So Cow Water's rebate offers $3 for every square foot of living lawn that's transformed and an additional 50 cents per square foot for converting traditional spray nozzles to drip irrigation. In November 2021, the city partnered with Cow Water to host a virtual webinar focused on lawn-to-garden transformations, and this workshop reviewed how you could transform your lawn into drought-tolerant landscape or plant an edible garden and make other changes to transform your outdoor space and use less water. In July 2021, staff launched the city's Electric Leaf Blower Rebate Program, and this program offers a rebate for the purchase of an electric leaf blower or the battery and charger. The rebate program is structured to offer landscape businesses 75% of the purchase price or up to $500, and residents can receive up to 50% of the purchase price, a maximum of $100. The city has so far issued rebates to five commercial businesses and 25 residents. In 2021, the Parks Department invested in roughly $9,000 of electric equipment. This equipment you, is used at all of our city parks and also on spare-the-air days. There's a lot of lessons learned from using the equipment, as some equipment is easier to use because, and some is more difficult due to issues with battery life and even the weight of the equipment. Evaluating leaf blower regulations was identified as a city council priority, so staff will analyze best practices and policies in other cities and present findings to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission before returning to city council. And that concludes my presentation, so I'd like to open up for questions.
Thank you very much, Andrea. So I want to bring it back to the council. Do we have any questions? Okay, I have questions. Uh, reach codes. Reach codes are part of our climate action plan, I think, and did I see that the current reach codes are expiring at the end of this year?
Yes.
Have we started working on new reach codes for next year?
Yeah, so we have started looking at new reach codes for both new construction and existing buildings. Uh, I made a presentation to our Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission in May, and will be returning to the commission with, for, for further evaluation.
Okay, good. And are we working with PCE to do that? Is it?
Yeah, PCE has been a great resource. They are, again, developing some model language or, uh, a model ordinance language for the city to review for new construction and then also providing support on the existing building side.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I had a question. Do you have any updates about, um, about some of the countywide efforts to, um, to implement the food, food waste recovery program?
I, I know there's a lot going on, but I do not have an update. I could follow up with you.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll ask and then follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other council questions, do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to invite up, um, the members of the audience first before we go to the Zoom call. So, uh, Belinda Clo- Clover?
Hi. Thank you so much for all that you've done with the Climate Action Plan. I know it's a lot of work and it's a great, great deal of anxiety surrounding this issue. I, um, I have been working with the climate issues quite intensely since 2015 when I went to the Climate Reality Projects, um, training in Ida, in Idaho, and I went a second time with my daughter, who also works on the climate project, climate issues. And recently, I'm working with, um, San Mateo Citizens Climate Action Team, and I'm, I know that this is a difficult issue, and I know that this is, you know, in, not an easy problem, and we can't solve it alone here in San Mateo, but I am concerned that with the latest IPP, IPCC report, we are not, we are not doing enough to address some of the issues, particularly around immediate issues and things that we can do right now. We have good, a good start to long-term plans, but with the drought, I, I think that we really need to address our water usage and being able to deal with that. I think one of the things that's not addressed is the, um, food. We could do a lot with food, and that's not addressed, not food waste, but the kind of food we eat. If we eat more local or if we adopt something, uh, similar to a Blue Zone diet, the Blue Zone Project is an excellent project that many cities, um, have adopt, you know, are adopting, and that helps mitigate client, the climate issues. and that helps mitigate the climate issues. So I think we need to think in terms of things that we can do that are easy and immediate, and using less water is really important, and I've read articles that, I mean, it's, it's critical that we address it. It's not like we have a choice. We have to address it. We have to make those hard choices. We can't sit back and hope that by 2050, everything is okay. This is the time when we need to act now. So I really thank you for all you do, and I know that it's not an easy issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Whitehair.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you for the opportunity to be back in person again. I want to just thank all the things the staff they've done. This is a very, Climate Action is a very difficult thing to deal with, and a lot has been accomplished in the last few years. The thing that I want to point out is, well, first of all, I want to say that I'm happy to report that I turned off the gas in my house two weeks ago. I have a heat pump water heater, a heat pump for space heating and cooling, got rid of the dryer and using a clothesline, and we have an induction cooktop, actually induction stove. It's doable, it's not easy, but it is doable for the rest of San Mateo to electrify. I would add that what you've done so far, in a way, we've kind of all, through the council and citizens and residents of San Mateo, have done the easy part. Part of that is the Peninsula Clean Energy and the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by clean power. Now the hard part starts, which will be the electrification. As you know, San Mateo Climate Action Team is very interested in electrifying all of San Mateo. We know that's not going to be easy, and we know we're going to have to work together with all the residents and businesses to make that happen. One of the things where I really appreciate that the city has started the campaign, you have an induction cooktop loner program, you have a seminar coming up, and you're doing other things I think are just fabulous things to do. Beyond that, we're going to need to deal with the workforce. I think you've heard me say this before. We're going to have to be able to find enough people to electrify all of San Mateo. Not going to be easy, we want to make sure there's enough people. We also, education is key, and there's a number of bills before the legislature right now that we're pushing that would make this even easier. So I really appreciate all you've done. I know it's going to be difficult, you're going to see a lot more of me and the rest of us in the next year. There'll be some more speakers after me speaking online, and we really, really are keenly interested in electrifying San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll move to the Zoom callers now. The first speaker is Diane Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor Benia and council members, and thanks so much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Diane Bailey. I run a small community climate action group called Menlo Spark, and I'm here in support of the San Mateo Climate Action Team and their request for continued bold action to rapidly phase out fossil fuels and address the climate emergency that we're in. I really appreciate the Climate Action Plan update this evening and the very significant progress discussed that includes the previous reach code for zero-carbon new developments and the various sustainability improvements. Looking forward, the city of San Mateo has a really exciting opportunity to be a true climate leader. This council took a bold step this year by adopting a strategic objective to establish policies to decarbonize existing buildings and eliminate methane gas use by 2030. A mouthful, but a very important policy. It's wonderful to see community outreach on this effort, including the electrification webinar and other programs mentioned. These efforts are a really important start, but there's so much more to do to address the extent of the climate crisis that we're in. As you know, we're already feeling severe impacts of climate with the drought, dramatically increased wildfires, the hazardous air quality that comes with the smoke, and so on. And as others have noted, the IPCC warned us that we have a limited window to take action to limit the extent of these impacts. Hundreds of scientists contributing to this latest global report have made it very clear that we need to act rapidly and decisively to phase out fossil fuel use in order to have any hope of a livable climate. The carbon pollution reductions needed to meet our current climate goals require electrification of almost every home and business. It's really essential that the city move forward with another reach code this year that not only renews the commitment to avoiding methane gas use in new construction, but also curtails polluting methane gas use as heating and appliances are replaced in existing homes and buildings. And I really appreciate Mayor Benia bringing this up. It's a very important opportunity this year. The city should be actively planning to discontinue permits for gas appliances as they are replaced. Allowing any new fossil fuel devices or infrastructure, including gas heaters, for example, is really out of step with the city's climate goals as well as the global science community and what they're telling us in the IPCC reports. I hope that San Mateo can continue to show leadership on this and show meaningful progress on this new commitment to eliminate methane gas by 2030. Thanks so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Cho.
Auntie, can you get the thing he said? Hello, can I be heard?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Honorable Mayor Benia and members of the council, my name is Wendy Cho, and I live on 42nd Ave. I'm also a member of the San Mateo Climate Action Team, like Belinda and Robert. We're a volunteer group of San Mateans who support bold climate action in our city. I've actually been concerned about climate change for many, many years, both with studying it and how to cope with it, well before Al Gore's film An Inconvenient Truth brought it into broader awareness. But today, I'm more than concerned, I'm truly alarmed, and I'm determined that we all have to act because we have so little time left. Simply put, we need to put policies and plans into place to reduce greenhouse gases sooner and at a greater scale than what is currently proposed in the city's Climate Action Plan and that 2050 target, which is so far away. I believe that San Mateo's Climate Action Plan is important, and it will help slow the march of the climate crisis. It is progress. Andrea Cho mentioned so many wonderful things in the plan, new EV chargers going in downtown, new affordable housing units that are going to be all-electric, which is amazing, rebates for 30 electric heat pump water heaters have been given out. These are such valuable improvements, but on the other hand, we just can't wait for a dozen or so upgrades each year to solve our climate crisis. Given the sheer number of existing buildings, we still have to decarbonize. And so as Diane mentioned, you know, so many extreme heat problems, wildfires, sea level rise, these things are all getting worse, they're straining our infrastructure, they're stressing out our emergency management systems. If we don't take serious action now, we will be looking at unlivable conditions in our area. So I truly want to commend the city for its current progress, and I also want to note that we need a much faster rate of change. More incentivizing of end-of-life appliance swapouts for homeowners, especially landlords, more EV chargers and more incentives for drivers to go electric, especially the drivers who put in the most miles, whether it's Uber or Lyft or truckers or fleets or school buses. We need more electric buildings with solar and storage. We need it all, and we need it soon. The list just goes on and on, but let's be ambitious and bold and work together toward this common goal. Thank you so much for your new resources, including the induction cooktop loan program, which you have now put on your website. I personally love using mine. I recommend everyone in the city check out this program. Thank you so much for hearing my comments and for all of your wonderful work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carol Steinfeld.
Hi. Promoting gray water-ready plumbing and gray water systems is in the cap, but we don't require it for new development, and that's how we ended up with the CalWater building, the new CalWater building, not representing the very practices we agreed to promote and, and practices we agreed are baseline, or are baseline for an arid region. So given the water stresses that will likely increase, as well as the potential for gray water systems in particular, as well as water conservation, to reduce the wastewater that goes to our expensive new treatment plant, we really need to formalize these practices and require them, not just list them in the cap and hope they somehow manifest. So let's do that. Also, as I've mentioned before, the Loma Prieta Chapter, that's our local chapter of the Sierra Club, is promoting a model water ordinance for our region, and this was first driven by Valley Water for Santa Clara County, so it's kind of vetted by them already. This is further along in Santa Clara County, and I will forward you a packet this week and to the Public Works Director and suggest ways to include this code language in our regulations so we can implement these practices. So in the meantime, let's call on staff and the Planning Commission to require all features of the cap, such as gray water systems. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Claire Shintani.
Hello, my name is Claire Shintani, and I am 17 years old. I am a member of the San Mateo Climate Action Team. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. To begin, I would like to thank our city council members for taking necessary steps to electrify San Mateo. These steps include the organization of the electrification webinar happening on June 22nd, as well as the induction cooktop loner program. Now I'd like to frame the climate crisis from my perspective. My aunt lives on the beach. She worries that her home will be underwater as sea levels rise. My father is allergic to dead grass, his coughing fits and hives increase in severity as California grows drier. My friend's family home was destroyed in the Napa wildfires. She worries it will happen again. Like you, my friends and family are my first priority. I would do anything to protect them, but I feel helpless in the midst of this environmental emergency. Once again, I voice my appreciation for all that city council has done to combat the climate crisis, yet climate change will worsen exponentially in the coming years, and we need to take firmer action to fight it. San Mateo wants to decrease greenhouse gases in existing buildings by 100,000 tons by the year 2050, but with all due respect, 2050 is not soon enough. According to the International Panel on Climate Change, Earth's temperature will increase by three degrees Fahrenheit in as little as eight years. We cannot wait 30 years, much less 200. Based on the Prague's report for the Climate Action Plan, it will take two centuries for enough buildings to be electrified in order to meet the existing building target and reduce greenhouse gases significantly. Again, we cannot afford this kind of time. I urge the San Mateo City Council to take stricter, more aggressive action against the climate crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vivian Scott.
Hello, my name is Vivian Scott. I am 17 years old, and I am a member of the San Mateo Climate Action Team. I would like to thank the city council for their recent announcements about the upcoming electrification webinar, an important step in spreading the word on electrifying homes and businesses in the area. The climate crisis has always been impactful to me, and since I was young, I have recognized the weight of it upon our communities. I grew up with asthma, and throughout the past few years have had periods where I didn't leave my house due to smoke. I've had worse asthma symptoms within the last three years than I've ever had in my life due to wildfire smoke after simply stepping outside. Recently, I have been able to see the effects of climate change in our own backyards, seeing worsening droughts and an increase in wildfires, and I've been doing my part in fighting it through lobbying, because climate change is not the future, it's happening right now. I'm strongly concerned for the city of San Mateo, as our 2050 target is so far away. Before 2050, we will see harsher effects of the issues we have failed to address fiercely and boldly. The city's Climate Action Plan is a good start to mitigating the effects of climate change, although much more fierce and drastic action needs to be taken. We cannot wait until 2050 to reduce the amount of greenhouse gases in our existing buildings. We need to begin electrifying now. To reduce greenhouse gas emissions, electrification will be required in almost all of the homes and businesses, and at the rate we are moving at, it will be 200 years before we reach the required target. I strongly believe that aggressive and fast-moving action in electrifying is the direction that city council needs to move in, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, and our last speaker is Emily Fang.
Hello. My name is Emily Fang, and I'm 18 years old. I too am affiliated with the San Mateo Climate Action Team, and I thank the council and staff for recent announcements that the city will be holding an electrification webinar on June 22nd, starting an induction hot plate program, and taking other steps to electrify homes and businesses through solar panels, for example. I began gaining interest in climate change in high school when I took an AP Environmental Sciences class. We had field trips in which we went to areas to restore mulch and planted plants. We learned a lot about the climate crisis on these trips, and I really valued the experiences. I further wanted to contribute to this cause, and so I joined this team, and I've recently visited China for my own personal purposes, and I've been able to see the effects of climate change much more drastically in that area. And after seeing the documentaries that have been available nowadays, it really just opened my eyes to, like, how important this situation is. And as an average citizen, sometimes we, we can feel helpless, and though we have many, like, issues and we're being affected by the, the situation, it can be difficult to, to feel like we, we can do something about it sometimes. And so I, I joined the team in order to learn more about lobbying and to, to give what I can to this process, and I really do appreciate what you guys have contributed so far with the dozens of changes you've made recently. But as was stated by the, the previous speakers, 2050 is still too far, and we need to take a more aggressive approach for this to be more helpful for our future generations. As a young person, I would like to see our future with a livable climate, and I feel that many young people feel lost in this situation right now. So if we would be able to, I, I just want to contribute anything that I can, and I, I thank you guys for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Emily, and I believe our next speaker is Crystal Hernandez.
Yes, that's correct, thank you. Hello, I am a Bay Area resident, San Mateo resident. I'm a mom of two and a fellow student at Skyline College studying environmental studies. On behalf of my organization and my family, I support your efforts tonight to create a comprehensive plan to tackle climate change, although I believe more severe implementation is needed. As a part of that plan, I urge you to improve both all-electric and EV infrastructure reach codes. I really do, you know, believe in the people of San Mateo, and I know that, you know, we could be leaders in climate action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have no other hands raised.
Thank you very much. So let me bring it back now to the council for comments. Who would like to go first? Yeah, we have a question. Sure, go ahead.
Forgive me, I haven't, I haven't memorized the Climate, Climate Action Plan, so I'm hoping you can, you can refresh my memory in terms of how, what, just kind of outlining the multi-pronged approach that we're taking for water conservation and in the Climate Action Plan.
For water conservation and in terms of emissions, the importance is, you know, overall reduction of water usage in systems and especially water heating, so a lot of the measures focus on the energy use required in water, so we are looking at different water measures for reach codes, so that is a consideration. And then reducing overall water usage in landscaping isn't another important?
In main what? Main, I'm sorry, missed the words.
Reducing water consumption in landscaping, because that is the majority of water usage in a household.
Landscaping, yeah.
Landscaping, sorry.
Great. Okay, and then that was actually one of the, one of the strategic objectives that we talked about this year was also figuring out how we can, what ordinances can be passed. One of the speakers raised the question about gray water systems, and I was wondering, is that, is that a strategy that we're also integrating into the public education sort of suite?
Yeah, a lot of our efforts to promote gray water systems has been through public outreach, so in the past, I've held specific workshops on
So in the past, I've held specific workshops on laundry-to-landscape systems, which is a form of gray water, where you're able to water your landscaping with your washer-machine water.
Okay. And then I was wondering if we, if we are, one of the other speakers talked about the Blue Zone, I believe it was. And I was wondering, is that something that we could maybe get a presentation on in the future?
Yeah, that's an interesting topic to me as well, and that's something I can explore. I'll spring back to council.
Great.
Thank you. The council members?
Comments?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Well, Andrea, I want to thank you for all your work that you've done on this. I mean, I know that you and your team, it's not just you, have worked very hard on this, a difficult issue. You know, one of the callers mentioned that San Mateo has an opportunity to be a climate leader. And I really respectfully disagree with that. We are currently and will continue to be an environmental leader in the region, if not the state, the greater state. You know, no matter how much progress we make, or no matter how fast a progress we make, it will never be enough for some, and I understand that. But I am personally very proud of the progress that we've made and the leadership that we've had in this endeavor. And so I feel very proud to be a San Matean when I see all this, all the progress we've made. So thank you, and those are my comments.
Okay. I want to say thank you, Andrea, for all of your work. And I really do appreciate the email that was sent out, the Sustainability News that was sent out last week, which did list not only the webinars coming up, but also announced the program for the induction cooker. Because the induction cooker is an important part of decarbonizing. It's kind of the tip of the iceberg. If we can let people take one of those home and try it and see that you can cook without natural gas, then it'll help them lean maybe more towards getting heat pump water heaters, heat pump air service, and further being able to electrify their homes. Now, as everybody knows, I am probably the biggest proponent, maybe not in this room because Mr. Whitehair is here, and I see our other speaker who spoke earlier. But complete and full electrification, and I believe that we can do this if we make a strong, concerted, and loud effort. We're not going to do it by being calm, by sitting still. We do need to not be excitable, but we need to be out front in saying we have to make this change in a large and increasingly more emphatic way. I believe that if we maintain the way we're going, we're not going to make the progress we need to make. I'm happy to hear about the reach codes. And the reach code's going to look at decarbonizing existing buildings. I just know that we don't have until 2035 or 2045. If you listen to the IPCC reports now, 2030 is a good deadline. And we need to really be working toward that. And I can tell you, you agree with me. So I just want to say that I'm encouraging everybody, okay, to get out and publicize and stand up for and support this goal because it's important. Also, we do have to reduce water use. I hear that message loud and clear. We have to reduce it. We don't have to have lawns. I'm sorry, I suggested in 2015 during the last drought, or '16, that we should eliminate the lawn here in front of City Hall. You probably never saw a lawn out there in front of City Hall during your tenure here. But we used to have a big expansive lawn out there. Now we have the nice drought-resistant plants which are watered through a drip system. So the city is leading by example on that, although many people have forgotten about that by now. That's why I keep mentioning it. We need to get more serious about taking these steps. There's really no laughing matter here. I know it sounds like fun sometimes when we talk about it. There's no laughing matter here. So thank you for all of your work. And I hope we can all stand together and listen to the speakers that called tonight, especially the young people who are pleading for their survival. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea, for your work. And I do feel that the city takes this mandate very seriously. And we, in big and small ways, practice what we preach. And, you know, from transforming our own lawns into sustainable landscaping to opting into 100% clean energy through our PGE services, holding our own building codes to the highest standard of electrification in the way that we do business and we operate as a municipal service. So, you know, I think that there are many ways that we lead by example, that we hold ourselves to the fire. And I'm really happy to see us doing the learning of purchasing the electric leaf blowers and landscape machinery so that we can speak intelligently and with experience about what products are available, what the upsides and potential downsides are in terms of rolling this out more broadly in the city and the impacts that that will have. So I'm encouraged by the progress we're making. Is it fast enough? No, of course not. Do we need to keep pushing forward? Yes, certainly. And I think that this council has taken on a lot of very ambitious goals through the strategic planning process, which will only continue to augment and elevate the vision and the standards that we're holding ourselves to in climate action and expanding that scope. And so, you know, I look forward to working with the community. It was really invigorating to hear the generational perspective from the Climate Action Team that came out in mass tonight. And I really appreciate that level of organizing and contribution from our San Mateans who continue to hold us to the San Mateo way standard. So thank you for coming out, and thank you for speaking.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I do want to applaud the comprehensive nature of the plan because we have to come at climate action from so many different angles. And I concur with our mayor that the two that we're really focused on that I think we can move the needle on is water reuse and how do we get electrification in buildings as fast as we can. The cost is going to be something that we're really going to have to think about. And we've got to figure out how we can get those rebates even higher to make it more feasible for more of our residents. And those are the things that I think we're probably all going to focus on in the council. It's not just myself. But I applaud the comprehensive nature of the plan. And let's go forward, especially on those two, what I see to be probably some of our biggest initiatives. So thank you so much for all the work that you've done. And I know I speak on behalf of all of us. We're very excited to continue to work together on it.
Okay, that's, I think, is that. I want to say also, one final word. A big thank you to the San Mateo Climate Action Team for forming itself so quickly, for getting its messages together so quickly, and for attending and speaking in support of the tough work that lies ahead of us in such a supportive way. So thank you all very much. And with that, I think we're at the end of our agenda for tonight. It's time for communications. Do any council members have any reports or communications they'd like to convey here? Councilwoman Lee.
I wanted to remind folks that in celebration of Pride Month, the county Pride Initiative will be held in Central Park this Saturday, I want to say, Saturday at 11:00 a.m., and it'll be sober and fun, family-friendly also. So hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Any other council members? How about staff? City manager, city attorney, assistant city attorney? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.